Okay, we will call to order the official, the special meeting of the Batavia City Council for Tuesday, July the first, 2025. I guess I would, we don't call for prayer or anything in this one. Okay. Roll call for the roll, please.
Barazza, absent. Lancy?
Here.
Beck, absent. Malley?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah, absent.
Here.
Oh, virtual, thank you. Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lowman?
Here.
Peeper? Absent. Farenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Vogelsinger, absent. Four absent, ten present.
So we have the necessary quorum to get, to conduct business. All right, item three is reminder to everyone, if you're going to talk tonight, please speak into the microphone because this meeting is being recorded for BATV and without you speaking into the microphone, the television audience would not be able to hear you. We have no items to be removed or changed on the agenda.
No.
So moving to the only item on this agenda, I'm going to introduce Peggy Kobe, who is going to explain what's up and why we had to have this special meeting. It really is worth our while to do this meeting, let me just say, financially.
Yes, very much worth our while. Thank you. So tonight, we have four resolutions that we have for IDOT authorizing use of Rebuild Illinois funds. These were funds that the state borrowed. They borrowed 1.5 billion in bonds and distributed it to counties and municipalities for use on infrastructure projects. And the state is repaying the debt. So it was money allotted for the cities and counties to use as long as it was an infrastructure, infrastructure project that lasted at least 13 years and was a bondable project. So the engineering department had filed paperwork on this, but as they were going through and auditing things to make sure that the paperwork was in, they realized that it was not on the correct form. And so the due date is July 1st. So if you approve these, then they will be emailed to the state after the meeting tonight. And the four projects that we have, now these total more than the Rebuild Illinois funds that we received. We received 1.7 million. And these total more than that in case they don't give the full appropriation that we're asking for. If, if they do, we'll just release the funds later. So we have the Prayam Wilson project for engineering and construction. And nearly all of that project was funded through SDP funding, through CMAP. We received quite a bit of money for, and also through the state for the railroad portion. So this would end up that everything was paid for through grants for that project, which would be great. And we have the preliminary engineering for Main Street from Van Nartwick to Randall Road. And we have the Main Street reconstruction. This would be a reimbursement for a past project that's done for Route 31 to Van Nartwick. And then the last one is the safe routes to school for the city's share of our cost. Do you have any questions on the necessity for this?
I entertain a motion to...
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malley, for the approval of the actions to accept the resolution. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Resolution 2025-092R is approved.
Thank you.
So you can get that to the copy machine.
Yes, after the clerk signs them.
Right, okay. All right, we have no further business on the agenda, so I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Peeper?
Aye.
Thank you.
Turn this over to Alderman Wolf as mayor pro temp to run the committee.
Okay. Call to order the committee to hold meeting for Tuesday, July 1st. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
I'm waiting.
Yeah.
Taking the roll call and then...
Sorry. Give me a second. That'll all be better now.
Get my notes. All right, one more time, Barazza, absent. Lancy?
Here.
Beck, absent. Malley?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lowman?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Farenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Vogelsinger, absent. You have eleven present, four absent.
And then Karen will just do the notes tomorrow.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, as a reminder, to please speak directly into the microphone if you come up to use the podium, make sure you can see the little green light on. And then item three is items to remove, editor changed. Do we have anything? Okay. And then item four is matters from the public. For anything not on our agenda tonight, is anybody here for anything not on the agenda? Okay, same on. We'll move right into item number five, which is ordinance 2025-037, conditional use permit to establish tattoo parlor at 127 State Street. Good evening.
On June 25th, 2025, the Plan Commission's Zoning Border Appeals conducted a public hearing for a proposed conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor and/or piercing studio at 127 State Street. The applicant Alexis Pitts of AA Inks, doing business as Obsidian Inc., has applied for this conditional use permit to operate a tattoo parlor at 127 State Street. Ms. Pitts began a professional apprenticeship at Classic Tattoos, which previously located at the same address. Following the closure of Classic Tattoos in 2024, Ms. Pitts now seeks to open her own establishment, Obsidian Inc., at the same location. In her narrative, she states that the business will employ multiple tattoo artists and will provide services to residents of Batavia and surrounding communities. The applicant has submitted a general floor plan of the, of the current space, but she has indicated that she plans for interior renovations pending approval from the city council. Ordinance 2025-037 includes the findings and recommended conditions of approval from the Plan Commission, which are consistent with other tattoo parlor conditional use approvals reviewed by the city council in the past. During the public hearing, no members of the public spoke. The applicant addressed the Plan Commission, giving a brief explanation of their respective business and desire to establish their tattoo parlor in Batavia. She noted that she is a Batavia High School graduate, participating in the arts program, and is currently a resident of Batavia. The Plan Commission was supportive of this requested conditional use permit and recommended that the city council approve this requested conditional use. Their vote was a 5-0 vote with two vacancies on the Plan Commission. The applicant is present here and would like to say a few things before the committee takes formal action.
Hello, my name is Alexis. So a little bit about Obsidian Inc., I'm hoping to open August 1st, but it is dependent on the Health Department. I need to get a license through them. So depending on that is when I will open. I'm hoping either August or September at the latest. I do plan on doing a couple renovations to the building. It used to be a prior Domino's as well, so there's still some stuff from there that I would like to redo. The floors being one of them. And then I'm going to be redoing a little bit of the bathroom. And then I'm also going to be painting all of the walls and stuff like that. The hours of operation will be Monday closed. Tuesday, I plan on opening from 2:00 to 8:00, Wednesday through Saturday, about 11:00 to 8:00. And then Sunday is about 11:00 to 7:00. The space can hold up to six artists. I'm going to be starting out with just me and one other artist and looking to hire on more, either tattoo artists or piercers. I'm looking to be involved in the community by offering special discounts during community events like the farmer's market and bath fests. Any way that I can be involved, I would like to be. I'm also looking to do a fundraiser every year for suicide prevention services as well. And that is about all. Thank you. Any questions?
Have any questions?
I'll just say, in the past, we've had, you know, multiple different people that have done tattoo in town. I think we've never really had any issues with any of them. I think it's a good business that draws people, you know, as a destination for what they want. And, you know, happy to see it reopen.
Excited.
Alice?
I also want to second that, and thank you for choosing Batavia and coming back and staying here. Question about your services, do you offer piercings for like ears? I know some families look for tattoo parlors to do piercings and wondering if you offer that.
I personally don't do piercings. Typically, it's like a three-year program that you have to take to become a piercer. I will be hiring on a piercer, but it'll probably take me about a year because you have to get certain equipment for a piercer that I currently do not have, and it costs a good amount of money, and I want to make sure I have the right stuff. But yes, I will be having a piercer that offers all of those services. Thank you.
I have a story about, I have a story about the building.
Yes.
That basically is the second building that's in there. The first building that was in there was destroyed by a fire on November 4th, 1972. It was the day after the presidential election of that year, and it was in the middle of the night. And it was, at that time, the building was being used for a laundromat, and people used to bring their laundry down there and do it. And I forget what the real cause of the fire was, but that was in my, what my mother used to call my wild and crazy days. And I was a, I was a newspaper reporter for radio station WGSB up in St. Charles. And the night before, I'd been up all night covering the presidential election of that year. And so I was pretty tired, and I'd finally gotten home and gotten into bed, and about 1:30, I was also a volunteer fireman. And so, and I lived one block north of that location at Spring in Washington. So the tone goes off, and I look out, I could look out my bedroom window, and all I could see was smoke and flames coming out of the roof of the place and everything else. So I got up and got dressed and ran down there. I was up, I was there for the rest of the night. That's why I have such a tall tale, story about this whole thing. It was totally destroyed inside, and, but we got it out, but there was nothing left to save, and it was just a bad scene. So the folks that owned it were able to get an insurance settlement, and they got everything put back in. And I think they used that and then for another laundromat era for 10, 15 years, and then it kind of swayed into other uses. But I think you got a good use there. It's pretty close to downtown, and you got on the street parking, and it's got all the right things for you. So best wishes and going forward.
Thank you so much, yeah. It's a great location. I'm super excited.
Right. I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2025-037 for conditional use permit to establish a tattoo parlor at 127 State Street. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. That'll go on our next city council agenda for next, a week from Monday. And if you want to come down, talk about the business and what you're planning on doing there, it'll get broadcast again.
Perfect, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to item six, which is a discussion on maintenance of vegetation at the north end of Clark Island.
Some pictures.
And I wanted to make sure if everybody saw what Abby sent out, you know, her, her thoughts on this and what we're doing. Just a little bit of history on this. We've had, the, I believe it was the Environmental Commission went through and looked at vegeta, putting some type of vegetation out there to try to help the island stay where it is. It's, it's an attractant for immature fish. It's an attractant for spawning fish.
It filters the water.
It filters water. I mean, there's a lot of benefits for that. And, you know, it protects what I think is a pretty good asset in downtown, in that island set up there. So, you know, we've gone through a couple different things with it, trying to either keep it, cut it down, manage it, how we do it. So I think that it's good that we discuss this and talk about, you know, trying to maintain something there that is natural. It may not be the most beautiful thing for everybody to look at, but I'll tell you, as a fisherman, it's a wonderful thing to go down there and see it, you know, when there's fish in it. It's, it's really kind of cool to have that right in downtown.
So here, I've got some photos of what is there. And off to the right-hand side, you can see where the American Water Willows are planted right on that kind of shoreline. And then in the middle of that island are growing other various species. Some of them are native species, some of them are invasives. Alder Person Beck sent out an email today with a little explanation of what the definitions of those things are versus a weed, which is any plant that you don't want where it's currently located.
I just have a quick question and a comment.
Is anybody here from the Batavia Environmental Commission tonight?
No, unfortunately, they were unable to attend, but Alex, who is the head of that commission, did send some information to council with regard to some ideas about how it could be maintained in the future.
I would be supportive of a brief discussion tonight, but any, like, before any future decisions are made, I would really like to have somebody from the Batavia Environmental Commission here.
I think it's important that we involve them in that discussion, and, you know, they're more apt to do deeper research than we're probably going to do. So I think it's beneficial that we have that before we make any kind of long-term decision on how to manage it.
Excellent, thank you.
Jim?
So the Park District has the Clark Island Recreation Area listed as one of their facilities. So, so the city owns this, not the Park District, or the Park District?
Nobody, nobody owns this. This was a coffer dam that was just dumped.
Let me tell the story. What happened here was, when we rebuilt the Wilson Street Bridge, we tore the whole, we tore, we tore down the whole bridge half of the time. So we left the first half up so people could drive over it. Then they built the new part, then they moved the traffic onto that, and then they tore down this part and connected them. So in doing that, the company doing it had to build several, what they called coffer dams in the middle of the Fox River to protect all the pouring of the concrete for the big pillars that are now in the middle of the river. And so when we got pretty much near the end of this, we had some folks then in the engineering department of the city of Batavia say, you know, we got an idea here. We may be able to sell, save $30,000 or $40,000 by just letting that debris, which was the stone that's there now, was a coffer dam out in the middle of the river for the bridge. We'll just let it float down the river, and it'll go down below, and it will just disappear. So the city council, I don't, were you on the council when that?
Yeah.
And they, they discussed it, and they said, well, it sounds like a good idea. We could save $30,000, $40,000 on this that we can put into the bridge, blah, blah, blah. So that went good. So we said, go ahead and let the coffer dam float down the river. Well, what nobody apparently found out till after the fact was, is that right underneath that island, and this is why I think we have to be very careful that we're not doing something that everybody gets all emotional about, is three, there's three pipes in the river right underneath that island. One of them is the main line going to the water treatment plant. Another one is the other main line going to the wastewater treatment plant. And the other one is a marked pipe that's on both banks of the river down there. You can see the signs, and it's the natural gas line that connects the east side of the river with the west side of the river. And when all that coffer dam got to those three pipes, it was like cavities in a tooth. All that rock fell between the three pipes and just laid itself in there. And it's been there ever since. And so when this happened, I got, I had a meeting with Northern Illinois Gas Now, and he's, that's, I don't know, when, do you remember what year we built the?
2007.
Yeah, so I think 2007. Northern Illinois Gas came up and said, well, you buried our, our gas line underneath those pipes, and the day's going to come when we're going to want to replace that line. So we're letting you know right now that we're going to come in there someday and want to take that line out, and that island's probably going to go with us when we take that out.
Reroute the line.
What?
We'll reroute the line, either under the bridge or in a different location. Something that's, that's easier to do than move all that.
Well, we'll argue about it when, when it happens. Anyway, that's why it's there, that's what the reasons are, and that's what happened. And, you know, I've already had the commitment, not a commitment, but a statement by one of the participants of one of those lines, that they're going to need the day when they're going to have to replace that line and put in something bigger, and that, the line that's underneath that rock is going to have to come out. So, so as a result of that, we've now got ourselves into this thing that becomes kind of a, I don't, I don't like the looks of it personally. And what I feel very bad about is there were two people in the immediate past of Batavia who donated multi-millions of dollars to enhance the riverfront in downtown Batavia. One of them was the longtime chairman of the Batavia Plan Commission, Peg Bond, and that's where the Peg Bond Center comes from. And Peg Bond had a boyfriend all of their days here in Batavia, as long as, with Phil Elstrom, who owned the building right across the river here where the bike bridge goes over to, and he had the restaurant in there and everything. And so, in their estates, and I don't want to cite how much money it really was, but it's multi-millions of dollars that those two donated to the community of Batavia. Number one, to build the Peg Bond Center. And then secondly, to, Phil Elstrom came up with the idea that he wanted to beautify the east or the, the Fox River going south from the Wilson Street Bridge. And we've already done some of it with the city's money and our facilities because we owned all the land. But you got over on that east bank there, and it was all privately owned land right up to the river. So Phil Elstrom left a, an account of money in his will that was in the millions for the, to the Batavia Park District to buy all the property on the south side of River Street adjoining the river. And then when the house that were there were, were bought, they were immediately tore down, and that was added on to as, as a park. With the idea that that would be a beautiful area for the bike trail and walkers and everybody else to enjoy the river coming off of Clark Island and going up underneath our, then bridge and whatever. So then I just am kind of insulted by the way this thing looks. And if we can come up with some way that can be planted that'll make it look nice, but we're going to have to maintain this thing. Because I, I think it's, I've had somebody else tell me that they were going to leave some money to Batavia to do some further work on that, but they don't like the way this thing looks down there right now. And so we got to be careful what we're doing here because there's other people watching that and trying to build on what Phil Elstrom and Peg Bond donated to the community of Batavia. And I get upset about it myself because they were both friends of mine, and I know they had strong feelings about really thinking that the river going through downtown Batavia is, was a crown jewel and something that we should really build upon and act upon and replace and support. And they left the money to do it, and I hate to think that now we're going to let the thing kind of go down. So that island, I guess, is the city's island for lack of, because we were the, I was the mayor, Alan was on the city council, and we made the decision to allow him to do that, you know.
And not challenging, thank you for the background. I'm just going to the Park District website, and it's saying the Clark Island Recreation Area is a unique combination of three islands and the Fox River, as well as a large open area on the eastern bank of the river. To your point, maybe we can't solve this today because I, what I hate for us to do is spend all this time, and then the Environmental Commission's not here, and the Park District's not involved, and then suddenly we get, you know, our, our time is for naught.
Well, the Park District gets all the money to buy all those houses from Phil's estate. That's where I think that's comments being made from. Clark Island, in some form or fashion, when it was first reclaimed by the CCC back in 1932, there's three islands there. Now, maybe they, they're not all kind of in the complexion that they used to be, but there are three islands there. So this thing is kind of the man-made moment that happened there that, as I say, I was told the day will come when their, the gas companies want to want to go in there and take that out and replace that pipe. And I don't know how easy it would be for them to move it to someplace else on the river given the size, because they're telling me that there's more and more gas being needed to be pumped into Batavia, and that the pipes they got there now are almost getting up to capacity.
Mayor, the quarterly update for the Environmental Commission, they were supposed to be sometime in the last little bit, is going to be July 21st, so we may be able to discuss this at that meeting. Because they will have representatives, so that's a couple weeks out.
Okay. That's a good idea, I think we'll...
I'm not trying to argue, I'm just trying to point out what the history here was in this thing. And there's, there is, I think, in the facts of many old-time Batavians, some degree of sensitivity that two people gave multi-millions of dollars to enhance this riverfront through our town, and that was their dream to see. And they largely accomplished it. And then we made this judgment that we're going to let the coffer dam float down there, and that's where this situation came about.
Kevin?
Yeah, you know, thank you for the context, that's really helpful. And, you know, this is incredibly important item, right? Obviously, we're talking about the heart of our town and where we want to see it go. It sounds like there's a lot of questions out there, sort of, you know, what's on the island right now? What do we all want it to look like? Who, who owns it might be, or doesn't own it, or, you know, whatever the case may be. I think the Environmental Commission would be a great insight on this, and I'd like some more time. I did a little bit of reading up on dogbane, sounds like a pretty cool plant, actually. It pulls lead out of the soil. Sounds like a, something, we, we don't want lead. Sounds cool. I don't know if there is lead, there probably isn't lead anyway. But anyway, these are the types of things that I'd like more information on. I guess, at the risk of, of kind of, I don't know, I'll just do it, right? Maybe I'll make a motion that we table this till after the Environmental Commission meeting. Was that July?
21st.
July 21st. So I would suggest that we sort of table this until after July 21st with instructions to the Environmental Commission to kind of give us some insights. And I'd appreciate to hear more from the mayor as well on some insights also.
Would you like to send questions to me that I can then forward to BEC so that they can be prepared at that meeting on July 21st? And then also, V3 is the consultant that we had that went down and identified the current vegetation and has done work on our naturalized basins, such as that that we did on Mahoney Creek adjacent to Kirk Road. So if you have any questions for V3, we can also get those answered in the meantime.
And would it be appropriate to even perhaps bring in the, what is it, the Batavia Parks Foundation or some other nature enthusiast in downtown? I mean, I know there are multiple people who enjoy being in our downtown, who enjoy watching our wildlife, birds specifically, and people who enjoy fishing. So this does encourage that type of natural habitat, and so just getting more insight from a wider group of people.
I know that was something that I remember when, after the riverwalk started, and like the Plain Dirt Gardeners, I think was the one group, they managed some, what looked like a lot of weeds in areas down here, but over the years have really, I think, adapted to where they're at along the riverbanks and in other spots that have worked out really good. So I think when we actually look at that and try to figure out what's the right thing to do there, I think that's the best. Honestly, I think if Phil Elstrom or Peg Bond were here and they knew that that's what was going on out there, they'd probably support trying to manage it, just like they're doing all the flowers and everything around.
I think having some type of habitat there looks better than a gravel pit, so.
Yeah, definitely. And realize that's underwater for part of the year, not as much as it used to be, but it is underwater for part of the year.
Dustin?
On the note of having some vegetation there, I think Alex of the Mary Milk Commission emailed all of us beforehand. She made a few good points on that as well, of doing so also keeps geese away, as well as helps get rid of some of those invasive plants. Theoretically, long-term, the maintenance might be reduced by doing so.
And, and I think managing it and doing it the best we can with input from the Commission...
And realize, that's underwater for part of the year, not as much as it used to be, but it is underwater for part of the year. Dustin?
On the note of having some vegetation there, I think Alex of the Mary Mill Commission emailed all of us beforehand, she made a few good points on that as well, of doing so also keeps geese away, as well as helps get rid of some of those invasive plants. Theoretically, long-term, the maintenance might be reduced by doing so.
And I think managing it and doing it the best we can with input from the commission that we have seated is a good idea.
Tony? I just have a quick question, I'm just looking at the satellite image here. We're calling it Clark Island, but is it really Clark Island? It's not.
So, it's not, what happened is, there was Clark Island, this would be known as an accretion to Clark Island, which the park district, back when Alex was inquiring about planting the water willows and who she needed to get permission from, the park district's position was, we didn't accept ownership of the accretion.
It's not Clark Island, it's this gravel.
Gravel bar.
Yeah.
Well, it can disappear and probably will one of these days when the gas company has to take the lines out.
Or when the dam's gone, and we really get higher flows through there, that could be the other thing that could happen to it, who would disperse it around the island.
I would second the motion to table.
Sounds like everybody's in agreement on that.
So, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. We'll move on to discussion number two of the city council committees.
Okay. I don't know if people have had further opportunities to think about this, or talk with one another about whether you want to continue, does it seem to make sense to continue to have the committees, because then you've got two people among you who kind of develop an expertise in the subjects of those committees, and kind of can help present and advise the rest of you about it? Or has the committee of the whole structure really, everybody wanting to know, you know, all of the information and just discuss each topic as a group? Is there one preference?
So, I would say the system that was in place when I got on the council was the committee of the whole, but then there was a chair and a vice chair for each committee, and instead of the chair bringing everything up, it was, so when Mike Brizzotto was, he was the chair of the city services, and I was a vice chair, and he would always present all those items, the memos that were relevant to city service, he would let me know if he wasn't going to be there, and I would cover them. And I thought that system worked very well, and, you know, Mike and I could, you know, be more informed about that than having to, you know, certainly everyone can be informed about everything, but I would recommend we go back to that system that was in place. It was after the election when he stopped and several others, and we never had the reorganization meeting to select the new committee chairs, and that was always done by seniority. So, the four senior chose which committees, and then the next four senior chose which vice chairs to hold, so.
It was, the council made the decision to not fill the vacant positions until after the election, and everybody could take a look at the list fresh.
Yeah, because we did let it go from previous elections.
I think that might have been my election, because I've, we've never really.
It was before that.
Right. So, for me, I mean, it's kind of six half dozen the other, I wouldn't mind attempting that, but at the same time, I think we've, you know, I think we have a very, I don't know, you know, active council, everyone, you know, kind of wants to participate and, you know, get their voices heard and kind of be educated on each topic. I think we've gotten by without it. I mean, I don't know, does it just add more complexity and more unnecessary formality to, you know, stuff we're trying to get done? I don't know, but I do agree, I mean, on certain occasions, it's like, you know, it's like having a key customer or something like, okay, on certain projects, maybe it's smart to have like a construct, you know, two people who are good at construction or whatever, you know, and that's just who we look to, but I think those things just happen kind of naturally, but.
Just to pony off of Tony's, could you kind of explain like what you did as far as the presentation? It wasn't like, you know, how that worked?
Yeah, so it was basically being, bringing myself up to speed, and Mike, you know, we'd talk about, you know, what the different topics were, because they're, if you look at the memos, they're all labeled to what department it goes to, whether it's city services, government, community development, city service, government services, public utilities. And then, so we knew which ones that we would be presenting, and it takes the burden off of the chair to have, you know, because it's, for the last couple of years, you've been the one that's been, you know, I don't know how many times I've said, I'll take this, and it just takes the burden off. It's not to say that, you know, and if, like, the chair or the vice chair have questions, any council member can ask, you know, reach out to the department heads and ask questions, or whoever's preparing the memo. It was just a system that was in place that allowed the chair or the vice chair to present the topic, and oftentimes with, in conjunction with staff presenting.
Well, and that's kind of my follow-up question to that. I know a lot of times, sometimes we automatically deferred to staff to present that, you know, so, you know, I kind of like the structure, but then I'm like, well, staff is presenting it anyways, and we're all here to ask questions and everything. You know, I don't know if then the formality runs into where it comes to city council, then that is where maybe a committee person would present it, you know, bring it up during a city council discussion, and have that more information, you know, kind of summarize.
And it's, you know, there's not always, you know, not every department head's always present for a meeting, you know, Laura, you've had to take a number of them, and it's just a, I think it's just another connection that the council can have to have more interaction with the different departments, and create a more collaborative approach is the way I see it.
You know, so first off, you know, I've been really impressed with the knowledge of staff since I started, and, you know, but still, I mean, you do have to do your own homework, you do have to kind of go through, hey, what is this topic, what is the history, what is all that stuff, right? And, you know, just speaking as a newer member of the council, my first thought a lot of times is, am I the first person to discover this? Do other people know this? Do I have to share this? Is this something like that, right? And it's almost exhausting, and I don't mean in a weird way, I mean, I feel like there should be like a briefing before every item. So, for instance, Clark Island, right, it'd be great before if I walked in the door, this is a place I could go to where I could say, okay, here's where all this stuff is related to this topic, right? Just a little pre-read. And the cool part about that approach is that our meetings are faster as well, right? I don't know what that would look like, whether it's a publicly accessible drive where they could kind of jump in and say, here are the related docs to this topic. That way, we can kind of come in a little more informed, because I've already had the experience, I'm sure other members of the council have, where I walk out the building and I'm like, oh, why should I ask that? Right? And it'd be nice if I could get those questions kind of prepped up when I walk in, you know, those are good to go. That's my take on it, but, you know, really, I think, you know, really impressed by everyone's, you know, knowledge and background and commitment, but some briefing would be nice.
I was going to say, I kind of echo Tim's comment here as well about, it might not be necessary to have specific committees so much as maybe like specific initiative working groups, because I think the committee of the whole is very useful as a broad discussion. In the previous comments, folks mentioned that everybody would end up attending all the committee meetings, so they hear what's going on firsthand, and that was rather onerous. I think keeping a committee of the whole like this is, would be an excellent plan. It also is useful just because it provides a bit of a buffer in an idea, where an idea is more broadly introduced here, and then there's like a week to percolate on it a little bit before it finally goes through final approval, and if there is public opposition or approval, we get to hear that as well. So, this format works good, but I think it would be nice to have a bit more structured, like, maybe policy, like, research, policy crafting on our side, instead of, it feels like sometimes we leave it all to the staff, and that's a lot of work on staff as well. So, if we had smaller working groups here within, you know, the bounds of the Open Meetings Act especially, that could maybe be a way to distribute some of that workload a bit, gain expertise in specific areas, so that we're more prepared going forward, and just gain a lot of the advantages of the committee system without necessarily the rigmarole of it, if you will.
That was something that I thought about during the, you know, thinking about this. You know, when we were back at the committee structure, we usually had people that had real strong desires about the committees that they were the head of, and, you know, they just stayed there pretty much forever on the council. And one of the things that in some ways was good was they had that, you know, deep desire for knowledge on what was going on with it. The other thing sometimes was that didn't come across all the time. So, it was hard when, you know, somebody that didn't go to the meeting didn't know what happened, you know, had to try to extract that from somebody that was there. We didn't have the minutes available or the video available like we do now, so that you can really see what the discussion was about, what was the opposition, what was, you know, what was said by who was there. I think the working groups that we've had in the past have been beneficial when we've done that with small groups that have, you know, the River Street, the bridge, the different big giant projects that we've had. We've had, you know, two or three people that were kind of key involved in those, in the day-to-day, you know, what happened, and could talk about that at a council meeting or at a committee meeting. I like the way we've run the cow the past couple of years, because I think we try to get everything from staff that we want before, we should do that. The questions should go in, they should get answered. If they, you know, happen to be something that comes up right before the meeting, they can get answered at the meeting, so I think that's okay. I think that might be a little daunting for some people when I decide I don't want to do this, because it is a lot to try to go through and read all those memos and have somewhat of an understanding I try to have on everything. It's not easy. So, you know, if we did decide that we want to share that, I think that's a decision, we really need to think how we're going to do that, how we're going to spread that around, and how we would work that out. Alice?
I had a clarifying question for Tony and for you, since you have experience on what it was like before. I'm confused as to what else entails that chair and vice chair system aside from presenting and reading the memos. Were you privy to more information than we currently are, or did you just read the memos that we currently get, and were more, you know, asked questions separately to get more of a feel?
The memo as presented was the initial starting point, if there was further questions, you could reach out to whoever prepared the memo to get further information prior to. Nothing prevented anyone else from council from doing the same. There was no, there was no exclusivity to it. It was a matter of, you know, taking the burden off of the chair.
How many people wanted to really be involved in that? Did they want to go in and say, okay, I need to know, you know, we're replacing five transformers? What's the real process for that, and they got all the background, or they didn't? I mean, that's, it's just how, however deep somebody wanted to dive into that position as being chair of a committee. Leah?
I wasn't here when we had those type of committees, but we all have a varying degree of interest, time availability, and I could see the committees being a little lopsided, depending on who was chair, if we went forward with that new structure or went back to that structure. I think right now, we have a very natural, where people kind of naturally take on interest to different memos or topics. I mean, security cameras, Tim's on it, right? Like, Dustin has his areas of expertise that he'll come very prepared for, Abby, obviously, you know, and so we, I think that's kind of just naturally happened, where one or two committee members did a little extra reading, a little extra diving into the topic, reached out with questions on important agenda items. I think some of them don't necessarily need that level of extra interest, and I think it's okay for us just to show up and have a discussion here. And it's, we all have been elected to know what is going on with every memo before we come to a meeting, so that is on all of us to brief that before we come. And Alan, you should never feel like that that is solely your responsibility, so.
I just want to clarify that the committee structure was still, you know, was still committee of the whole, it's not the old committees where there was any separate meetings. But I would clarify that when it was happening, it didn't always happen this way, but the chair of the committee would run the discussion, that they would be the chair for that item, and again, taking burden off of the.
Sometimes it was good to have somebody else do that.
Yeah. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, kind of answers one of the questions, and it really, as I'm hearing the discussion, I see sort of two buckets of pros to this. One is the content area, it sounds like sometimes chairs for these committees would jump in, and they'd dive deep into community development or whatever committee it happened to be, and sometimes they wouldn't, it sounds like, right? Kind of dependent on their interests, their availability. So, there's the content bucket. It sounds like the other value would be the administrative side of it, sort of just running our meetings. Right now, we've been very lucky in that, you know, we have Alan who has years and years of experience and runs our meetings well, you know, someday if he decides to go fishing, you know. Tony, you did a great job, I don't mean to call you out like that, but I do see then sort of just the running the meetings of themselves, I think there's some value there. As a new council member, I was wondering, why does Abby read the consent agenda? Oh, because her name's on the website under that particular committee, no other reason than that. I see the value in that second part, right? Having the chairs run the discussion, they would call on who's, you know, who is raising their hand, kind of, kind of run the forum there or here in the committee of the whole. The content side of it, I don't know, take it or leave it, kind of depends on who gets there. So, that's kind of how I'm viewing it, and the value I see is having some other folks other than just Alan, who does a great job, being able to kind of run the table a little bit, you know, be able to call on the folks and do that.
And Alan won't always be here, and we're up for election together in two years.
I already said I'm done, this is my last term. I promised that to my wife, and I'm going to stick to that.
And I said two years, and then I'll decide, so, not four. Thanks for taking that four, Dustin.
So, what do we want to do with committees? Do we want to keep that and go back to that structure, figure out seniority, and take the top four and have them pick a committee they want and go from there?
I would recommend that, because, and another point being that it builds capacity if we were that, by having committee chairs, and the committee chairs leading discussion, that builds a capacity of the, and the skills of the members of the council to be able to take over, and it's good succession planning, it's good institutional memory to have the, someone that's, you know, spearheads different committees, so I would be in support of continuing what we let lapse, basically.
I think, and I'm sure I'm not, that's why I'm thinking this, this does not mean additional meetings, correct?
No. This just means that those four people get to read and present stuff that I was doing. Jen?
Since the direction that we're going to go, my question would be, you know, should somebody step down? How is that going to get filled? Are we just going to kind of move people up, or is the person that comes in just going to replace that?
No, it would be still by seniority, so it would rearrange, you know, if somebody steps down, somebody leaves, somebody moves.
Somebody leaves, would you do, let's say, if we do this process tonight, would you go back and say, start at the beginning, take them all off and start with most senior? Or would you say that the most senior who doesn't have an assignment has the first say as to whether they would fill the vacant?
Yes, yeah, that's the way we've done it in the past. The simplest way to do it. After an election happened, then it was okay, you know, Michael Bryan's no longer here, so we need someone for public utilities.
Right, and of the people who don't have assignment.
And Nick was vice chair, so he became chair, and then Mark was the vice chair. So, it was through that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're done with that discussion, we will move on to item eight.
Do you want to fill the, do you want to do that tonight, or do you want to wait?
We can do it.
Do we want to consider, are there potentially other committees that we need to think about besides just what we have?
I'm not sure it's clear that's the direction, I mean, is everybody, I'd rather not do that, so I don't know if anyone else is of that opinion, but, yeah.
I make a suggestion that staff go determine what committees we need, the level of seniority of everybody on council, and bring that as a presentation to the next cow.
I have the seniority list with me now. I have the seniority list with me now. I had thought that what you wanted to do was start over with committees and just pick by seniority the chair and vice chair now? Or do you only want to do that for vacancies that exist?
We also have one of our most senior council members not here tonight also.
So that's the other thing. I think we should do it when we have a full council.
All right.
Oh yeah, and the website. The only committee that doesn't have a chair, while government service is vacant, but Abby's the vice chair. So Alan is chair of community development. Mark's still on there, so there, that's vacant. I'm listed on the city services because we, that's when, when Mike stepped on, we never, we never appointed or went by through seniority to fill those positions. And Jen's listed as second on there without titles. And then Nick's still chair of public utilities and the vice chair is vacant. So having Abby here would be, since there's so many vacancies. You know, Abby would want to stay in that same.
And that's something that I don't think we have to vote on.
I know I would want to stay.
Agreeing to those positions and then changing them and getting them posted on the website. It makes sense.
And so if, well, first off, I think Tim still wants to oppose this, I think, which is fair. If we do move forward with it though, all the rest of us, we should probably come in with an idea of which one we want then, right? Assuming we're, we're senior enough. So it would be smart if we do decide to go with this, which I think we should decide that, that we all then begin to really think about where we want to be. Seth?
You know, and for each committee, it'd be great to just have like a publicly available shared drive, just a OneDrive that just all the documents are looking at, just kind of dump them in there. Just to give some.
What was that suggestion? I'm sorry.
So for every committee, if we're going to go this route, just have a publicly available like shared drive. Not shared, shared drive is a bad word, like a Dropbox. So we have, we have Office 365, right? So we can do a publicly available OneDrive where any reference documentation, they can dump it in there.
So it's as opposed to right now, what we do, all the information is attached to agendas?
Well, that's you, your staff are sending us, or attaching stuff to the agenda. This would be, hey, I'm on the public services committee. I found this article, I like it, I'm going to throw it in this content. So people want to see, hey, what are we looking at for information? This is what we're looking at. Does need, because right now.
Maybe we can do like a SharePoint site that you guys can share information with one another?
Yeah, as long as, I'm, I'm thinking of the Open Meetings Act. And I'm thinking of, hey, this, this would be content that we're looking at as part of a, part of a committee.
It was, I think you'd have to find out, it probably has to be available on the website. So that way it's something that doesn't get us into an open meetings act. And it can only be sharing information, not discussion.
Totally, yeah.
Maybe on our transparency page.
Leah?
Again, that was a great example of I a hundred percent know that Jim is going to deep dive into a committee. And other committees won't go into that, deep into that responsibility. That's kind of why I like the current setup where if you have a special interest, you're, you're taking that on yourself to, to focus on that special interest. So I'm kind of, is there a way that we can have a new hybrid of these committees? Because Tony, I understand what you're saying, like succession planning and everybody having opportunity to lead part of the meeting. And I think that's valuable. But I, I'm not quite sure that we're all on the same page of full blown committees who are going to be deep diving into every single memo.
For the administration side of it versus the content side of it.
So there was nothing, nothing that ever prevented anyone that had interest into diving deep into it. It was just a matter of structure. So there's things didn't fall through the cracks. So by having someone, appoint person on every committee, you prevented that from happening. You, you had, they led the discussion. If, if someone took further interest in, in diving deeper, that's absolutely was, you know.
And then they can bring it to the meetings, you know, if somebody does a deep dive and share that information that the public can see. And that way it's being discussed and shared with everybody, including the public. And we don't get ourselves into a, any risk for that.
So I think when we have the full forum or the full council here, we'll go through that list, pick that out and then we'll be done with that and kind of move that forward just kind of on the administrative side. And then again, anybody wants to do anything deeper or bigger, we can put it in a repository somewhere on the website that we can share it. Because then it's, I don't think it would be any problem for us to do that.
So you're talking about creating a, a place where we collect documents that the committees can just add to or what do we? I'm not sure I understand the direction on that one.
I think Alan said it the best, just a repository of documents. Here's what we're, here's what we're considering as part of this committee.
Here's thoughts and information that people on the council have found that are, you know, tremendous, whatever we're discussing, whether it happens to be.
Right inside of where, I'm just looking at, right inside where you have the chairman, vice chair. Boom, here's a link to associated documents there. That's all I'm thinking you're.
Right.
If somebody wants to share. Google OneDrive or.
You got laser piece.
If somebody wants.
I'm sure there's an IT person smarter than me that could.
Yeah, it's part of the software that you have. I mean, you can go ahead and do it. But part of the, part of the reason for this is, example being like e-bikes today, right? I, I, you know, before the meeting, I do my homework, I look at the e-bike stuff. And I'm like, okay, is, am I going to walk into a meeting where no one else is going to have access to this information and not going to do their homework? And I'm going to spend three hours talking about, you know, stuff that people should have done ahead of time and just don't know where to go, right? This way, hey, it's like, maybe e-bikes is too, is too big a, big a topic, but let's, let's make it the new sanitation plan, right? We're going to have a big talk about a big vote on the sanitation plan. I'm not probably going to do a good job, you know, researching it for, you know, two or three hours to get through all that information. But somebody, if Dustin's on the committee that handles that, he's going to do all the homework. He can just throw the docs in the, in the repository, then I can go ahead and just look at them. Hey, I'm ready to go. That's just that kind of thing. And that's how we run stuff like that.
But that could be done outside of being on a committee.
Yeah, I'm true. I got to inside here.
I look at what Abby sent out about the river, you know, and that's something that could be shared that way.
Is there a problem with it being shared in the email the way it was?
No, because nobody responded to it. It's one directional. Anybody can send information out to any of us at any time and not.
For the Open Meetings Act.
The minute you hit reply all, then it's subject to the Open Meetings Act.
But I took it as information that was being passed along and read it and was like, okay, that helps me come prepared to the meeting this evening.
Right, and I think that that should be something that not only share it with all of us, but the public should see that too. You know, and that would be a way for it to be more transparent, you know? Hey, you guys had this backdoor information that you got the day of the meeting. Nobody else in the public knew that. You know, if it goes into a public place, then it's available to everybody.
I, I do want to hear what Max has to say. He's been very patient, but I, I might just point out, I feel like this discussion's a little off. I feel like we're veering off a little bit. We, whether we have committees or not, we could still have sort of a publicly available, here's some, you know, a lit review, as we might say in the scholarly field. Here's our lit review spot. Whether we have a committee or not, I don't see that impacting it. It's a great idea, Jim, I just don't know if it's committee based. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And I know Max has been very patient, so.
Yeah, so all of you should have gotten some emails from Diligent over the past week or two. If you haven't, please reach out so you can log into your account. That's our new agenda management system. And there are things in there that we can use and dive in deeper in terms of agenda management, document repository. There's things like member notes and member briefings that only you would have access to. So there's a number of things in the new platform that may help you kind of organize better and kind of have those discussions. Well, not discussions, but, you know, share those documents and whatnot. So that's something that we can look into as well and get back to on.
Okay, so I think we know where we're at with that right now. And we will move on then to item eight, which is e-bikes and e-scooter regulation. I'd like to start just by saying, I don't think we should spend a lot of time on this. I think we should look at what the county has got in control of the bike paths that they're using countywide. If we want to adopt something, let's adopt that. That way it's standardized across the area and not something more restrictive, less restrictive or anything else different about what we do in town. Because those bike paths are only here for a couple of miles.
I think the concerns that we received didn't, they didn't address the e-bikes on the bike paths. It was the behaviors on the roads that were of a concern and the age of people who were using the type of e-bikes that can go up to 28 miles per hour. And that's where we're seeing the regulations is to say, if you're riding that class C, that you have a driver's license because it's going as fast as a motor vehicle on the street. And then looking at what streets that it would be allowed on. You know, some other municipalities have been saying if it's 35 miles per hour or more, that those shouldn't be on there. But there certainly are the opposing views as well because a bicycle in the hands of an athlete can go 28 miles per hour itself and does not face either of those same restrictions.
One of the things I'll say is I followed somebody out from the Jewel parking lot down to 31 and I had to try to keep up with them. No lights, nothing on the bike. And it's probably one of the fastest e-bikes I've seen. I mean, he had a backpack on and he was flying down the road with zero lights. And that's the thing that scares me. Or the kids that go out, we've got a great construction site right now out of Van Orwick. And they're all over out there and then they go flying down the streets when it gets dark because they're going home. And there's no lights on half of these or they're not using them. And to me, that part of it is a safety issue. I just, you know, I don't know, I guess we can separate it if we wanted to have separate rules for streets. But I think the one, the biggest thing is the lights. And as it gets dark and half the kids are wearing black clothes or dark, you just don't see them. You know, and I'm afraid somebody's going to get hurt.
So oddly, the state has spoken in this regard, with regard to Chief Blowers. I believe it's lower speed scooters that they regulate and require helmets and, and lights if they're being operated at night.
So lower speed scooters, less than a travel, no more than 10 miles an hour, you have to be 18 years old to ride. The higher speed scooters are categorized as a motor driven cycle in the state of Illinois. And those actually require like licensing through the state, which I don't think is very commonly done. The bicycles are also subject to some state regulations. Primarily the class three e-bikes that, so the e-bikes, one of the difficulties with the e-bikes is just enforcement and, you know, identifying what category a bike may fall into just at first glance. But the class three e-bikes are the ones that go up to 28 miles an hour motor assisted. Those are age restricted already to 16 and older. Use on sidewalks is prohibited. With regards to your concerns regarding lighting on bicycles in hours of darkness, that is already also state statute. That being said, what we're seeing is a lot of municipalities start to adopt ordinances that are similar or somewhat more restrictive than some of the state statutes. What I'll say is it becomes problematic for riders, much like you were touching on, because you go from one town to another and when you cross that border, are the regulations different? So I think being cognizant of that, working with area partners. But, but there are safety concerns in terms of like really youthful riders riding some of these extremely powerful devices that they would never be able to get up to speeds, pedaling on their own at, maybe not wearing helmets, using them on sidewalks, using them on downtown areas. So thought it was worthy of bringing these concerns to council for further discussion.
You're seeing the same things I'm seeing, just kind of all over town, they're out there. And some of them, even some of the scooters, I'm shocked at how fast they can go.
Yeah, and so some of these devices, I personally don't know how, but they can be modified to go faster than the manufacturer recommends too. So those are of even greater concern, I would say.
Yeah, so low speed is considered seven, 750 watt motor or less, which 750 watts, that's, that's a powerful electric motor. So I guess there's a question, I'm assuming they're not allowed on sidewalks, is that correct? Or?
Yeah, the e-bikes are not allowed on sidewalks. Correct.
Okay, so they, they all have to be on the road. And then if I'm riding an e-bike, do I need a helmet and protective gear? Or like PPE protection?
No, there, I don't believe there's a helmet requirement.
Okay, how about if they're class three or higher? Does that change or no? No?
I would have to look that up. I don't know off, offhand.
Let's go.
Resource here for all of us.
Yes.
We have the owner of our local e-bike store.
Yeah, please, please.
It's a fun subject right now.
Happy to be here to be a resource. I'm right there, 60 feet away. Everyone has been saying very good things. You get covering the laws right, there's federal laws already, there's state laws. The local ordinances will add confusion, but they're all trying to help. The problem is the undereducated riders who might be youthful or otherwise not already licensed drivers doing reckless things. These rules help my business. I've been saying this for a long time. But I think the crux of it all is we need to educate these younger riders. If the parents are going to choose to let them ride one of these things, with great power comes great responsibility. But great power is not 750 watts. It's a lot of power, but it's one horsepower if you do the math. Or if you took like a mini bike that a lot of people grew up on, that's like six and a half horsepower, 49 CC, class four. Those high, high speed, you know, 8,000 watt things, those are motorcycles, but no one's getting licenses on them. So I know I've been like wondering what was going to come up and I loved hearing this, but I'd spearhead educating all the youth. It's something I'd offer to come up with our safety quiz and some best practices and feed them.
That's something I'd really like to see set up with the school district. You know, just here's what the rules are and we need to make sure that it's all put out in front of them. We do it in driver's ed, we do it all, you know, all the time for different things. This is something that we have to kind of spearhead this and get this out there because I don't want to wait till somebody gets killed. And the way I see it going and the way I see things happening, this is worse than mini bikes when I was 10. I mean, this is, this is nuts. When you go out there, they're silent, you don't know they're coming, you know, they don't follow the rules, they do whatever they want on them. Matt?
So I was just going to say a couple of things. One, I think an ordinance might be a little too much. I think the enforcement part is going to be very difficult because I can tell you going down my road, there's kids on scooters that are going down the middle of the road. No one's, no one's going to stop that. I think there isn't. They start at your house and go to my house. Yeah. And they come flying down, it's on e-scooters and, and they're not wearing helmets, there's nothing. So I think there really is more of an education issue that we need to be talking through and not so much an ordinance or enforcement thing. I don't think the, it'd be almost impossible to enforce something like this. So I think the education, I'm much more behind.
Even PSA, you know, go down to, to the bike shop and go through, here's the realities of what's available to you guys to ride, all the things you're doing. This is how you have to responsibly do that. These are the rules you need to follow and get that out in front of them. I mean, we can't force anybody to do it, but we can try and educate as many as we can. Jen?
Could we encourage some sort of registration of these items and have them kind of sign off like, this is my responsibility or something like that?
You have a safety fair. I mean, I can remember doing this when I was like, I think in third grade. We all brought our bikes to school one day, the police were there. They checked everything out, made sure it was somewhat safe. And then we got a little sticker that we put on there that we had our bike checked.
I mean, I, I like that. I mean, I'm, I'm with you, I'm not for the regulation of it. I mean, I'll regulate in front of my house.
It's called a two by four thrown off the street.
They used to even go in the cul-de-sac and come across Pine Street. And I stopped him one day and said, I don't want your head in my yard. I said, you need to have your lookout on the corner. I mean, that's as far as I went. Having a great time, but yeah, if there's some way that we could turn it into registration, safety check type thing.
The thing about registration is just the enforcement of it, right? Then, then you're having officers have to stop and check every e-bike to see if it's registered, right? How do you?
Not a mandatory, but kind of like as Alan said, like a safety check. Yeah, that way, that, that may take some of the burden off of the parents because if they know that the bike is registered and the kids know that the parents know, that may start making them a little bit more, you know. may start making them a little bit more, you know, and then if the officers are out, not necessarily stopping, but just patrolling, they may be like, oh shoot, that's right, I did that safety on that.
Actually funny you mentioned the sticker thing. I had the exact same idea as a lightweight form of not like a full blown registration, but just kind of like a, a simpler enforcement mechanism. And honestly, we also have other resources here in town, too. We have the, the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission, who has also wanted to take more of a role in education, so.
It literally could be like a safety and information fair. You know, the kids would want to come down, be part of that, you know, make it something that's enjoyable for that, take the dog out there, you know, there are things we can do like that, that I think education makes to me way more sense than legislation.
I 100% agree with that. And also we have the Bike Police, which I think is a wonderful program here in Batavia. I think that goes a long way. And I know the Bike Police Officers who, one of whom comes to the Batavia Transportation Commission, very good with kids as well. So it's been, that's been a very successful program.
And I think it's really important, too, that maybe we need to take, you know, a role in educating, you know, these kids, because there are a lot of times I hear about all the crazy stories of people that fly up and down the bike paths and torment people.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I know that that's not representative of the entire town, but you know, if 10 kids decide they're not going to do anything wrong, maybe 10 more decide that. Kevin?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what we've said here. You know, in front of my house, there's a band of maybe, you know, eight to 10 kids who do rove and, you know, like to have, have fun, and they're middle schoolers, so they're not always using the best language or the best decision making in that. So, you know, I like the idea of kind of a, a registration, or if we can incentivize the education, right? Find a way to draw out the, the parents with their kids. Challenge is you have to do it every year because the kids grow up and then there's new kids, and they grow up and there's new kids. As I'm thinking on this, there's a couple of things I'm, I'm considering. One, this is a, a challenge that communities are facing across the board, but it's an industry that we as Batavia don't have a ton of control over, right? We have a great e-bike shop in town, I encourage everyone to head down there. I rode a rad wagon around, trying to talk my wife into it, we'll see. But it's, it's really fun. But I was going 28 miles an hour, right? Like I was going fast, and that feels a lot faster when you're, you know, when you're just on a bike, right? You're not surrounded by your metal. And we've, I think we've all experienced the kids doing this. So the, the challenge is that we have this thing happening to us that we can't control, and it's good that the kids are on bikes. At the end of the day, I think I want to keep kids on bikes. I want them to be getting around and doing what they're doing. So the incentivizing makes a lot of sense to me. It gets the parents involved and it gets the kids out. I'd be interested in hearing some enforcement options, though I know enforcement is incredibly difficult. Sometimes you can't even tell if it's an e-bike or not. You can turn off the e-motor on it, and then you're just like, I don't know, that's a tough nut to crack, and I don't know how we do it, but I'd like to see both the carrot and the stick employed here a little bit.
I would like to help maybe come up with an idea to show you guys, because you've said like seven things, I'm trying to remember back, that were all great. The education aspect, we can almost, I don't know, I say we because I know I have some great ideas here for trying to host something that allows the parent to want the kid to be registered before even letting him get on the bike. And maybe speak that to the local schools, and maybe we'd set the example for other towns. But educating upfront, I can try to come up with something, present it to you guys, see if you like it. I want to take the rules that exist, the best practices for the vehicle, for the rider, kind of just put it all together, and I'd be willing to maybe incentivize it somehow with, you know, we donate all sorts of things for the community. Well, maybe because the one law on the books in Batavia is you have to have a bell while you're riding here, at least when I moved in, that was the rule. Maybe you get a free bell for committing the, or completing the course or something. It's, I'm here as much or as little as you like, it's an industry we can't control, and I say that, too. I can't educate everyone. They're buying on Amazon, they're buying on T-Mu, they're buying wherever. But if you come through my shop, you leave with education. That's where we start with. And if you're under 16, we're usually finding an example to show you when not to misbehave, maybe learn how to announce and do those things that you're supposed to do. So in any capacity, whatever you'd like, I'm here for it.
Is there anything other than, I mean, because my, you took a lot of the words out of my mouth, my, the main thing I was going to say is incentivize, but how do you do that? Well, you got to get the kids to want whatever it is on their e-bike. So is there like an accessory that's cheap that's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the bell's not it.
Right, I'm saying, no, no kid wants the bell.
You get that kid a phone holder, so he's not grabbing his phone while he's riding. It's already on the handlebars, maybe.
Like the silicone wrap that goes around his handlebar or something, you know? And then it's easy to spot from a, from a law enforcement perspective, like, oh, that kid's been through the safety, you know?
Simple LED lights.
Yeah.
That to me, that to me would be one improvement that would be, something would be cool, they would have their bike.
Like a battery.
The little LED lights, there are a million different versions.
It's got to be kid approved, or else it ain't going to work.
And something that, that is a cool addition to their bike, not just, you know?
That's what I'm saying, they got to want, they got to see it on the other kid's bike and say, I want that.
Yeah.
We actually just gave away the Active Transportation Advisory Commission, we got to get a shorter acronym, guys. We actually just gave away blinking red lights at the concert on the lawn this past week to a number of people that came up to our tent to check it out. And that is not what you want on the bike, but at least that could go on a backpack or, or do something along those lines.
Yeah, just thinking along those lines.
And they were relatively cheap.
Yeah, to get the kids, to get the parents to want. This has to be a partnership between the city, the school district, the bike, you know, the bike shop owners. So that way, when, you know, we can see some benefit from it. And if, you know, we only educate a quarter or half of the kids in town to get them to actually understand the rules, follow the rules, and, you know, responsibly use these bikes, I think we're making progress. And I think we could do that with the help of the, the Transportation Committee, we could get them involved in that, partner up with different entities, and, and make things occur that make sense.
Okay, you know, just a quick note, and I don't want to lose sight of this because, because it did happen. We did have somebody who was killed on it, I think on the e-scooter, a couple of years ago, right, right on 31. Some suburbs are looking at restricting access to some of the main thoroughfares. Am I, am I not right?
Where was this at? I don't remember an e-scooter death.
The, I tell you what, let me get the name, or let me, let me talk to you afterwards. I don't want to, I don't misspeak.
Sure.
When it's being recorded, right? But we, let's just leave it at we, we had people hurt. And they're looking, some suburbs are looking at restricting access for some, some of these vehicles to certain, out of the, off the main thoroughfares. I think in this case, the one I'm thinking of is 31, so.
Yeah, I think you could, I mean, we had just gotten an email from a constituent regarding a golf cart, you know? And if we're not going to allow a golf cart, which is arguably safer, you know, the type of golf cart that they're talking about, which is lifted with seat belts and lights and blinkers and the whole deal, and we can't drive those here, but we, you know, so there is some, something to be said there.
I drove one of those for last week, so.
Right, I know. Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I would say at this point, we need to try to get with the Active Transit, oh, somebody else, come on up.
Hello, I came here for this discussion, and I prepared something having no idea where the discussion was going. So I wrote some things up and I'll read them, and I'll leave out all the edits. First of all, thank you for being here, for the scooter and e-bike community. My name is Jean McLean, and I've lived in Batavia for 25 years. As an e-scooter owner, I'm here to advocate for the e-scooter riders who are responsible and care about making our prairie path and the bicycle lanes safer for all. I don't have an e-bike, although I may consider it in a few years. I've been thinking about it and investigating and looking at my options. My husband and I often enjoy using the prairie path as a transportation route since we have an entrance very close to our home. We also use Batavia's bike lanes on the roads. For example, I'll drop my car off for repairs on the other side of town. It's so convenient to fold up my scooter, put it in my trunk, drop my car off for the repair, then scoot home and get it later. My husband and I are your quintessential riders. You would love me because I have bikes all over, or lights all over my scooter. We use lights, we drive approximately the speed of a pedaled bike, eight to 14 miles per hour. I love my bell. I know the kids hate them, I love it, I use it all the time. I wear my helmet, I often carry or wear a bright orange visibility vest if I know I'll be riding on the roads using the bicycle lanes. I also quickly thank the walkers that I pass because they're moving aside, so I don't have to stop. I would like to think that these are good basic choices and manners that make scooters and bike riders good friends to the community who uses these paths and roads. Big edit. As a regular user of the bike lanes and prairie path, I understand the complex problem with the rude and selfish e-riders. The unsafe riders range in age from middle schools, middle schoolers who have not taken any driver safety courses, and all age ranges of selfish riders who don't have good manners. As a scooter rider, I don't like those crazy e-riders either. From my experience, the misuse of the roads and paths by speeding e-riders has become a situation that every community is trying to address. I'm glad this is up for discussion. I can tell you that I've recently ridden my scooter in Michigan, Wisconsin, and Florida, where e-vehicles abound. They are everywhere. Banning them, which I know we're not discussing banning them, but banning them for the roads and paths would not be an option, and it's gratifying to see so many active and enjoying the outdoors. In Florida, speed limit signs of 20 miles per hour are posted everywhere on their paths, and their paths are very wide. So I agree with the suggestions tonight. I love the idea of education. I'm a retiring teacher, I've been in the Batavia schools, St. Charles, et cetera. I love the idea of educating our youth, whether we do it in the schools, one day class or something, that really excites me, that we think about teaching the youth especially how to ride these safely. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yeah.
I mentioned when I was taking notes and blanked out on a couple of things, but I do think that this is the future of, you know, of e-bikes, e-scooters, and we should be encouraging that, especially with the congestion we have in downtown Batavia regularly. We talk about being a green, friendly, environmentally friendly town. To bring down people driving cars and to give them other modes of transportation is obviously in line with that. And so finding ways to be an e-scooter and e-bike friendly town, and knowing that that's the direction that a lot of the country is going. So to continue just talking about this in a really positive way, I like the idea of posting speed limits on the paths and stuff where that makes sense. I think that's a great idea, so thank you.
Awesome. And just as, as a final note, advocating for infrastructure is another layer to all of this, especially where you can separate pedestrians from cyclists from cars goes a long way towards supporting everyone. And for our bike trails here, I'll note, they're pretty narrow at eight feet. A lot of other places I've been, I used to live in, hell, heck, Huntsville, Alabama, where it was a 12-foot median, and you know, that's not exactly a cycling paradise compared by comparison to here, but that goes a long way towards giving people room on the paths to, you know, more easily pass each other, so just advocating for that as well.
Sorry, I'll just take a quick minute. So I'm Bob White, I'm on the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission. I just wanted to make a few comments here at the end of the meeting, or kind of the end of this discussion. One thing I thought was really appropriate, you said bad behavior is bad behavior. It doesn't have to be on an e-bike, it doesn't have to be on a scooter, it can be on a bicycle, it can be people walking their dogs five wide on an eight-foot trail that no one can get through. Bad behavior is bad behavior. Unfortunately, I would say in the last couple of weeks, I've seen a gas powered golf cart driving on the Fox River Trail. I saw an e-bike on Fabian Road this afternoon, trying to keep up with traffic. Not a great idea for anybody. So there is a lot of bad behavior. I think there's a lot of positives that we have to, as you mentioned, we have to remember too. A lot of senior citizens get into biking because they can e-bike, and they need that assist. People that are active and can maybe bike 20 miles an hour, they still like e-bikes too, because it gives them a bit of an advantage when they're training. And, and other opportunities for people that aren't physically able is, is really a critical thing, too, to remember. I really like some of the discussions the, the council has had tonight about more education over regulation, and that's really where the, the Transportation Council stands as well. We want to make sure that there is an opportunity for people to explore these alternative modes of transportation without becoming a safety hazard to the rest of the community. That's where we would stand. One thing I, that was a horrible time for Max to step out, I was trying to give him a shout out. One thing that this could actually help with is as we look to do our next bicycle friendly community application, which we literally just finished a week ago, two weeks ago, and that's where the shout out was coming. Things like more education in the schools, being able to tie this into the bike and roll and walk to school day would be an opportunity to increase the education there. Honestly, when I thought about it, I thought about it being at the grade school, the junior high, the high school, all those levels, last week of school, it seems like you hit summer and things go crazy. It's slow at the end of the school year, that might be a really good opportunity to partner with some different groups and try to raise that education level. So Max, as you stepped out of the room, I was trying to give you a shout out, thank you for the bicycle friendly application support you gave us. And as we look at things we could add for next time, additional education, if we are adding something, that is something we can put in there. And the other thing that was mentioned, too, was the 20 mile an hour speed limits. That was another thing in the application that was a demerit against us was some of the 30 mile an hour speed limits and the city limits. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, there was a ton of good recommendations with it. Like when we were going through the application, a lot of things in there gave us ideas of things to do. And so even though we might not be doing them now, I know the Active Transportation, one of the kind of follow-up items coming out of that was, all right, there's a lot of good ideas and here are a lot of best practices, you know, bike parking designs, roadway, like there's all these factors that can make us a more bicycle friendly community. So I'm sure the Active Transportation Commission will definitely be going through those and providing some recommendations, at least to staff and probably city council as well.
Thank you.
And maybe have a discussion in the committee level about what types of things you think you would support for education or, you know, a downtown city, school district supported rally, or whatever we decide to come up with, but something where we can go further with education with the kids. Because I think it's really important, because that to me, yeah, there are other people that maybe don't have the best ideas on them, but kids are always willing to try something new and crazy on them. And they need to know how far they can go and how dangerous it really could be.
We're being a lot more involved in the community of this, starting last fall and into this year, with the farmer's market, the concert in the park. So as we do that, I think we need to make more of a focus and maybe bring some more of that into it. Maybe we'll need to partner further on that.
Are you doing anything for the Windmill Festival? Because I think that would be a great opportunity to, you're going to have kids down there all over the place.
We'll check our calendar.
Yeah, I, I know it's coming up, I believe it's next weekend or the weekend after. But it's definitely something to consider, you know, for the following year.
Certainly.
I would love to see some, something regarding bikes or scooters be, become a part of our
I just wanted to add, I'm glad that you came to speak to tell us more about where the commission stands. I wanted to put a name to what I'm hearing also. I hear engineering, right? With more bike lanes, striping more bike lanes, more of dismount, you know, striping as well to educate our riders that they should dismount in certain places when they're crossing the streets. Engineering the bike paths to possibly be wider, because as we discussed in a couple meetings ago about engineering with the crossing guard, right? It's important to educate, but also making these permanent solutions with our engineering to make our streets and sidewalks safer for all of our riders.
Absolutely.
I'd like to add, Alice, we have a complete streets policy, so any street that's reconstructed, we do have to comply with it. That does regulate having those bike lanes in there. And we have our Bike and Ped Plan, so with the $300,000 that's allocated, we kind of knock those out and we have them prioritized. I think the Active Transportation Committee helped come up with that list, but as we have our projects, we kind of rotate them or move them around to coincide with our projects. So we are ahead of schedule on that. And our street division has placed permanent, "Dismount your bikes at the corner in the downtown." I know there's one right over here at Island and Shumway and Wilson. So whether or not people follow that is another thing, but they are out there for people to dismount in the downtown.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't think we want to take any action at this point. It's kind of what I'm hearing. We're going to try and research and prepare some information, education, and go that route with it. You know, and I think part of that is also just kind of getting it out there, that, you know, we are watching this and we do realize that there are issues with it, and, you know, we're not just going to ignore it.
And it's not just in the U.S.
Oh, no, it's everywhere.
It is.
You know, the technology is available everywhere. Okay, then we'll move on to item number nine, discussion on public safety video surveillance system policy.
So this topic was discussed a few weeks ago. Some of the topics of discussion remain unsettled. Again, this policy is specific to the police department, but will serve as a city policy for anyone given access to the public safety surveillance system. One of the discussion points that we previously talked about was the system audit log. So what I have on the screen here is a screenshot of the Axis VMS Video Management System Audit Log. As you can see, it's a pretty comprehensive log, but it does not have the capability to provide a justification for system use. So we did confirm that with the vendor, and we also confirmed this type of feature is not commonly offered through VMS softwares. Our current vendor that we use now, we, as you're aware, we have security cameras already. We have a VMS system that manages that. It's Milestone. That platform also does not have a way to log justification for system access. So again, if you look at the audit log, you can see that it does get pretty granular in terms of what the action is, the date and time, and who the user is making the specific action, even what computer they're on, things like that. Additional logs will be generated internally and retained whenever a video is either retained for evidentiary purposes. So if we download and retain it, we have evidence logs, and we would have maintenance of those records, or pursuant to an official request for duplication through the Human Resources Department, which we talked about last time. An additional change that was made to the policy since the last COW discussion was we did add language specifying a 30-day retention period in most cases. Only exception to that would be some internal police department videos that are necessary for longer retention periods for evidentiary purposes. Lastly, we were asked at the last meeting to meet again with the Batavia Community Diversity Initiative for a discussion related to the policy. So we did meet with BCDI. Their stance is really that they don't support or oppose the surveillance system or this policy. When we met with them, the discussion was more based on how the system and the policy would work operationally, did not address any specific request to change the language. So I can tell you that I found the conversation with BCDI to be very productive. I think that they would agree. I also think it provided all parties with an enhanced understanding of the intended system use, the policy intent, and the community concerns. BCDI did suggest, and we agreed, having an annual meeting with them to discuss how the program's going and whether it's meeting the objectives that it is meant to achieve. So again, the department will conduct an annual audit to ensure the system is effective and to identify any issues with deployment or use of the system. We believe that the policy that was recently distributed by email, and I apologize for the lateness of that distribution, forgot to put it out with the agenda, but that we believe that that policy is ready for issuance.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a comment. I appreciate your diligence, due diligence with all of this. And I know, I think this discussion has been going on, I would, almost a year since it was first brought to council. So for it to take this amount of time for just to, for all the parties to be part of the discussion, and I think shows to our community and to our residents that we as a council care and that your department cares, and so I really appreciate it.
And I think I've had to several times kind of defend the rationale for some of this, that, you know, part of these cameras are on assets. Part of these, you know, cameras are on, you know, very important infrastructure that we have, that we need to keep an eye on. We need to be able to see what's going on. And I guarantee you, over time, especially, I think on the electric department, will save us money because we'll be able to turn on a camera and look at what's there and get an idea of, okay, who do we need to send there? What are we going to need to fix? You know, and be able to do that. Where five years, 10 years ago, we didn't do that. We had to physically send somebody out there. And that will cut down the response times, I think enhance the safety of people going into situations that they might not otherwise have a look at without being there. So I think it's important that, you know, all of the uses of this system get, you know, publicized and people know about that. And the safety aspect for in downtown, I have no problem defending that. Alice?
I was present at that meeting with BCDI, and I appreciate the thoroughness and the explanations and the willingness to go over each section and offer a clearer understanding of the policy. I wanted to ask you if you could discuss that thing with Max that you were talking about, possibly having an option to include some type of log in separately. You guys were talking about how you talk about something.
Yeah, we had had some internal discussions about use of a secondary log, specific to log justifications. Ultimately, we don't think that that's going to be the way to go with this policy. I think it creates a whole set of other issues. We're going to have to cross-reference two different logs to try to match up information, utilizing that information. Additionally, it's inefficient. It creates additional workload on staff. And it just, you know, I think at a certain point, there needs to be a, the primary users of the system is going to be law enforcement. And so at a certain level, I think we need to place that trust in our officers, that they're going to be using the system for the right reasons, to do the right things. And that's kind of the point of this annual audit, is to be able to look at that, identify trends or patterns that are concerning or problematic, take a look at those things and address them. We have a policy. We have, you know, the ability to, you know, take care of issues as they arise, as they relate to the policy. So we did look at something that I later ran by our IT department, and they said that the solution that we had come up with probably wasn't viable, which kind of brought us back to the drawing board. So at this point, we think that we're, it's probably in the best interest to proceed with the, with the system audit logs, and then those other controls that we have in place for evidentiary logs and human resources logs.
The other thing that we're creating is a document that establishes what access any role that uses these cameras as an ordinary part of their job. What's the name of the position? What cameras do they have access to? And that will, and those individuals will receive specialized training on the policy itself. And outside of that, if there are requests to view any footage from any of those cameras that is not part of the ordinary course of someone's position, those requests have to come through human resources. And then the police are the ones that view the surveillance, not even anybody outside of the department, but we will have a log of all of those.
Yeah, I think as long as it's logged, and, you know, who did it, how long, whatever, it's very easy to go back and ask for a justification.
Exactly.
Why they did that. And then it's simple, and there's only one place you have to go to find that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So for this, for those listening, if anyone's curious, and this is included in some of the documentation that's been shared previously, we're buying the Axis Camera Station Pro. Within it, you have full user management, including role-based security. So we have three roles, administrator, operator, and viewer. I'm assuming for everything we're talking about, most folks are going to have viewer, not administrator, operator. And within those roles, you can set access by the actual camera themselves. So it's not like if somebody has access to the system, they have access to every camera. You know, so I guess the assumption would be law enforcement would have access to, you know, all the cameras. Then, for instance, somebody from the electricity department would only have access to cameras related to them and their role, right? So just to sum it up, you know, the platform we are purchasing as part of this program has full fidelity user management and logging that will allow any sort of investigation as far as who looked through what camera and when, as well as the ability to restrict access to certain assets on the system. So that's an integral part of the system. So just getting that out there.
Runner?
Yeah, I've been to a lot of meetings recently with a lot of the area mayors with all this stuff going on about the RTA and all this other great stuff. As a result of that, we sometimes break away from some of that, kind of the political junket at the moment, and talk about some stuff that seems to be really working. And I've talked to some of the couple of mayors in, in toward the city who say they've got the cameras now installed, and that one of the best things they did was put signs up saying, "We got cameras in this town, and we're keeping track of who's driving down the street," or whatever have you. They said, "It seems to have a notable impact on the number of bad guys that show up and then want to stay around. They just, probably just keep right on going because they're afraid you're going to get their license plate, or a picture of them, or whatever have you." So this, ours includes going to have some signs up, am I right?
Correct.
We haven't put them up yet.
No, but they'll be anywhere that we have public cameras, we'll have signage that goes along with those.
I was just going to say, I would encourage us to do that, because that seems to be a real strong selling point of keeping the bad guys out, because they don't like to have their picture taken. And the fact that we're advertising, hey, we got these cameras running, they have, think twice about going into some driveway on the east side of Batavia and taking stuff out of the cars, because somebody will also see the color of their car, and they'll tell you guys, and you'll be able to figure out whose car they're in and what the license plate was. So everybody wants to kind of stay away from towns that have these signs up, but saying you got cameras out.
Yeah, and I think it also helps with transparency, too, so people know that there are good.
Right, absolutely. But the ones, the mayors that I've talked with are real high on the idea that, hey, we're warning the bad people. Hey, we got this here, so they're saying, let's go someplace else, you know. I'm just saying, I think we got a good thing going here.
Any other questions? Tim? Yeah, no, I'll just make a comment. I want to thank everybody for doing their due diligence on this. Chief, I know this can get probably monotonous at times, and, you know, it's a fairly straightforward idea that's kind of complex in its, in its delivery. But I definitely think you guys landed on the right idea of not doing a second log. These audits are super detailed. You can dive into them. If anything arises, you can go find out what happened inside the system. The biggest thing, though, that you don't want to do is make it a hindrance to get into the system. This, these systems are very much like any other tool that, that law enforcement has. The more they're using it, the faster they can get to it, the more comfortable they are with the system, the better are, they are with it, and they can use the different capabilities. I mean, this was not a cheap system. They aren't, they're very capable, and the more that these folks can get used to them and, and utilize it, rather than, you know, because I see it all the time. You know, the data's only as good as, as those who are paying attention to it and what you're doing with it. So, you know, and we don't, we don't have enough cameras out there for it to be, you know, a concern of mine, where, you know, I mean, even the ones they're logging into, there's not a whole lot you can, you can do in there. So I think the more our, each individual officer is used to logging into it and getting to their specific, you know, what they're used to doing, whatever that might be in the system, zooming in on whatever, or just getting the clicks down on how to get everything done, that'll be a lot better than if they have to go and, oh, sign a reasoning to get in, and, you know, all that. I agree with you. We need to trust, we need to trust our officers to, to do that. So, no, appreciate all the hard work, and Max, you as well. Thank you.
Just to, just to provide some clarification as to this, what the second system we were kind of talking about was. We were planning on using like a Microsoft Forms or something that would require you to log in with your city Microsoft account. Now, the issue was that ultimately, the data collected in there, it's tied to one individual person, so it can't be shared amongst like a command staff. If that person were to leave, that data leaves. It's also got, you know, it's nowhere near as secure of a system as the Axis Camera Station. So we were trying to identify a system that could do that and somewhat integrate well. The more we looked into it and the more serious we got about it, the more problems we kept running into with kind of what we were planning to do. And then I also want to, you know, there's been a lot of news articles as well about the number of cameras. First of all, almost 50 of them are existing city cameras that are being ingested into the new system. So there's three cameras in this room right now. Those count towards the project because they're being brought into one central management system. Almost all of the cameras, with the exception of 22 of them, are on critical city infrastructure, fire stations, police stations, public works building, electrical substations. So out of this whole project, 22 cameras are in what we would call public areas. And so I just wanted to put that out there, for you all as aldermen to be able to answer those questions, that the vast, vast, vast majority of this project is tied to city infrastructure, things like electric substations, things like a public works building or a fire station, where cumulatively, we have tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars worth of equipment between the substations, the fire engines, the buildings, et cetera. So that's kind of the scope of the project. And I appreciate everyone taking the time to be as thorough as, as you have been with this. I think we're in a good place, and I am, I'm happy to see that hopefully we can get up and running and moving forward.
Just in full, full transparency, is that 22 sensors or 22 cameras? Cameras, correct? Sensor count, right, being quad sensors?
And I, so like, some of them are quad cams, so I count that as one camera. So there's 22.
For those listening in the, in the audience, it's four separate imagers, one cable drop, one license. So it's, it is one camera housing its four views. So that thing's looking all the way around at 360 degrees.
Correct. So there are 22 devices, is what I'm saying.
Just for clarity for everybody here, but then also for our residents, so we have public safety cameras that will be on the bridge, Peg Bond Center, and a few other areas. Who has access to those? Is that strictly people within the police department who are going to get special training?
I would say that our receptionist has a view of the entrance to the building as well.
But that's, that's, like, that's city property.
It is, but she can see out into the public.
Right. But I'm talking specifically, like Peg Bond, where we've put these new cameras, is that specifically accessed by?
Yes.
Members of the police department who are going to get trained?
Right, okay.
Correct. That is strictly police department, and then IT would technically have access. They would never utilize it, or wouldn't be in there very much, but they have access as administrators of the system.
And if they were, it would be logged that they had access to.
Correct.
And then when it comes to public works building, I'm assuming that Andrea has access to those cameras and other people in her department?
Correct. And so we are still, I'm still going through and working with different department heads on a camera-by-camera basis, kind of hammering out those finer details. But yes, largely speaking, you know, department heads over at Public Works are going to have access to Public Works cameras, electrical substation cameras, those sorts of things, but not the public-facing cameras, not cameras within the police department or the municipal center that have nothing to do with their job responsibilities. So it is being sectored off.
You know what, this has also come up, both from residents asking about them, as well as, Dustin, you sent a question about it as well. We do have public works cameras that monitor road surface so that we can view those cameras. that monitor road surface so that we can view those cameras in order to make determinations about sending out snow clearing and, you know, spraying for ice and things of that nature. I think we've got four of those, right Andrea? Five?
Is that a subscription service? We don't need it. We got new shiny cameras.
Can we tie those in or?
They are different and they, they have sensors to the pavement temperature. There's one here out on the bridge.
I tried.
The one that we were asked about was on Millview and Newton. There is some like wind energy.
Western and Thorson?
I think so.
I think I know what system you're talking about.
Yeah, so they have the, they kind of look like a solar panel within the camera underneath it. So we, and it updates, a couple of us in Public Works has access to that. So we can see.
But those aren't even like, you can't even log in and just view that camera whenever you want. Or actually, I think you can, but it's only in a low frame rate, right? It's not like a full-blown.
Correct. It doesn't constantly refresh, but we can get in. And then they do have more and more in the area. So we can also see different road networks as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 10, which is project status.
A few things to share with you. On July 12th, Max, Steve Allen, and some other members of the electric utility are going to be attending the farmer's market that day for the purpose of getting feedback and input from residents about the Brattle Group studies, the Integrated Resource Plan, as well as our cost of study and rate structure, ongoing project that we have. On July 7th, there's a discussion scheduled after the city council meeting about the results of the energy survey. And then our police department and Kane County Office of Emergency manage, our management are collaborating on a preparedness class for children. It's called Police, it's called Preparedness Police and Popsicles. And it'll be held here on July 16th. And there's information on our website about that event. Lori Botterman has been participating in meetings with the Batavia Public Arts Initiative, both regarding the new bike ramp next to the Peace Bridge and discussions about mural projects for that, as well as the ongoing project for the energy, the City of Good Energy mural that is being planned for the Comedy Vault Building, the south side of that building. And on July 9th, there is a meeting scheduled that's going to be hosted by Housley Levine regarding the South River Street Corridor Plan for appointed and elected officials. And the police department has on an ongoing basis through this heat wave being used as a cooling center. And when that gets opened, you can see that on the website if you or you know someone who needs that service. Over the last two weeks, every single employee in Public Works have been certified in CPR and first aid, which is an incredible benefit to all of them and their coworkers to be safe there out in the field. And it's just an important life skill to have. Public Works assisted Max with the data collection for the bike friendly application that was submitted on June 25th. Bernadette Lane work has been substantially completed and now we've reopened 31. The restoration work that was part of that project is ongoing. Jeremy Barki had a great idea to thank the community using the electronic message boards that were posted on Route 31 anyway. And we've been getting a lot of good feedback from the community about, that was really nice to say, thank you for your patience during this project. And we certainly do thank them for their patience. The street program is tentatively scheduled to start on July 14th. And the street division continues to do tree removals and plantings during this time of year. And that's all that I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
I don't so much have a question, but you know, the folks who live along the Depot Pond, they live in my ward and, which means I hear a lot about it, probably more than I'd like to, but I hear about it. And so as a result, you know, I did look into, I did talk to several sides of this topic from both the staff perspective, residents perspective, current older persons, former older persons, got the history, pulled up the Illinois old dam study from way back when. So I feel like I'm fully versed on this topic. And then you go out and you just look at the thing, right? So we, the Depot Pond is at the point to where it is obviously at its end, end stages in moving on with life as far as the, both the depth of the water and just the amount of seaweed and algae and everything. And the shores have receded and, you know, you could walk across it and barely get your ankles wet now. So we're going to have the, we're going to have Windmill City Fest, I think, what, July 11th, right? And a lot of people are going to see this, right? And what's probably going to kind of come up pretty quick is what are we going to do about this, right? So I know we have a study prepared or loaded up as far as a possible study to look at how much next steps on Depot Pond or the dam would cost potentially, right? What a project plan would look like, how we'd fund it, all those, all those things, right? I would like to get it on the agenda at some point soon because, like I said, it's unavoidable now. We're going to have a lot of folks going down. They're just going to see it. So it's going to be hitting us sooner probably rather than later.
So back when the proposal was being introduced, the Park District reached out and asked if they could make a decision whether they wanted to collaborate with the city on that feasibility study. And we were asked to wait a couple of months because at the time we discussed it was April and they had, they were going to have two new members of their board and a change in the leadership of their board. They wanted to get those folks seated. And then they invited me to their June meeting in order to make a little presentation and the ask if they would like to join us in the project. So my understanding is that they are going to have a special meeting in July to discuss and then decide whether they want to be part of this feasibility study. And then we can kind of determine where we want to go after that. So maybe we wait until they have their July meeting and I bring that back for full discussion.
I'd just like to add to what Laura just said. We really don't have a lot of good news about the dam removal. The state of Illinois had come in and told me and every other mayor from Carpenter'sville down to Yorkville that they were going to take them all out. And then they called about six months ago and said, well, we're going to have to postpone that idea. And now I'm being told, although not officially, that the money is that was going to go to that's part of the money that Washington is now keeping and going to do something else with. So there's, when we get into this, and I'm all for us doing this, but there's probably going to have to be some pretty in-depth public presentation about how this may have to be paid for. And I know St. Charles and Geneva are having kind of the same conversations. And it's, 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 it's not good news. I mean, and you start talking about how much it's going to take to replace these dams and it's multi-millions of dollars. And now in Kane County, in the last six, eight weeks, we've had a real bad experience up at the top end of the county in Carpenter'sville, where they were the ones that did get the dam removed. And when they removed the dam, it exposed, I think Mayor Hick, Skilman told me it was three large water pipes that are now sticking out of the river. And people are saying, well, what are we going to do about this? We got to cover those up. So he's, he's, he went and got some quotes. It was again, multi-millions of dollars to enclose the pipes. And he says, his state representative told him, well, if I'm lucky, I can get you $400,000.
And at some point, we're going to have to say, what's the cost of building a time machine and going back to the year 2000 and making sure the referendum.
Right, well.
Right? But to your point, I mean, it'll be an ugly conversation, but it's one we have to have.
We have to have a plan.
Yeah.
We have to have a plan that when and if it fails, how do we react to it then? And then what do we do to change it? This is, this is not a natural channel of the river. So I feel like it's easier to make the case to wall that in, make it its own pond, off-grid.
Order, we've already had this discussion. We already have a plan on, we've already passed something. We just need a feasibility study. So we don't need to rehash this whole thing out tonight.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
We're going on project status, I believe. How is the Van Nordwick McKee project moving along? It seemed like there's maybe a hiccup this weekend that alarmed some residents. Do we know, do we know much about what's going on down there?
The hiccup?
Nykor Gas was out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did hear about that. I don't know the status on that. But they are starting to work on subgrade. So they're working on McKee this week, and then they'll be working on Van Nordwick next week. And then they'll be able to start doing the curb work and lining that. And eventually, once all that infrastructure's in place and they could start putting down the asphalt, looking like they're going to be on schedule for the school year. And Polte has promised that they will get the sidewalks in on the west side of the street as well to get everybody to HC Storm.
What else, Dustin?
Happy for other, but we got a few emails this past week about concerns around the intersection of North Avenue and, I believe, Western.
Western.
Given our success, I would say last year of the traffic calming project over on First Street and Water, I think it might be time to look at doing another one around there, perhaps, something to discuss at a future meeting. What do you think, Kevin? Close to your area?
Yeah, I was going to bring this up when we got to the other as well. I think we've all received a lot of emails about that. I know Alice and I have gotten direct contacts from folks in our ward regarding that. You know, I'd be interested in, specifically, they're asking for flashing stop signs, but I think the discussion can expand beyond that. I would love to figure out what we can do short term to help and then also have a plan long term that maybe, you know, we need to work into a, you know, a multi-year plan because that intersection has been causing some troubles.
I think with some of the detour traffic that's been pushed in there, to me, has probably contributed to some of this. We have used the flashing light signs. I don't know if we still have those, any of the stoplight or the stop signs that are, you know, the outer wringer by, by that. And we've done that when we put new stop signs in on roads because at least for the first couple of months, people don't realize that they're there and they blow them all the time. So this may be some of that there, but it also might be a good idea to try to bring some, you know, highlight to that intersection that everybody needs to stop every time they come up to this because it is have a little bit of a hill and it is a place where people speed on Western. And I don't want to see any more accidents out there. So if Public Works can find out if we have those signs, I don't think we have to have any approval or anything to do that. I think that would be my idea is, you know, to add that in there. We used that out at the other end of that one. Wilson Street got redone. We've signed all of those with the flashing ones. And it's worked, it worked really well out there to make it obvious you have to stop.
Alice?
I wanted to, I agree with that, Alan, for short term, the lights, if we have them available, that'd be great, or if we can get them. I also wanted a second, Kevin's suggestion to have a further discussion on the topic of something more long-term with engineering that can be done in that intersection.
Chris, go ahead.
Oh yeah, my comment on this is I also received some of those emails and, you know, I don't live right by that intersection. It seems like we got some emails from the people who live right there. And last time we were talking about, you know, accidents and things in that regard, the chief was able to get us very useful information about how the road diet has brought down accidents in the small sample size, 26%. I was wondering if the chief could maybe look up over the course of the last two years, reported accidents of the intersection to see if it's truly a problem intersection as people believe or it's just because, you know, people live right there, so they see an accident, if it's home kind of closer to them.
So I actually have those statistics available now.
Awesome. If you could please share those, chief, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. I can send this out via email, but just to give you some idea, 2025 year to date, we have had three crashes at that intersection. Last year in 2024, there was one crash. The year preceding that, there were two. In 2022, there were four. And in 2021, there was one. Several of those are injury crashes and then a greater number is damage-only crashes. So four injury crashes over that four and a half year period of time and seven damage crashes for a total of 11 crashes.
So chief, with those stats, would you, how would you, I don't know, is there a way to rate that intersection as being like a frequent accident one? Is it kind of not very frequent? I mean, it seems like it doesn't sound like there's a lot there, but I just don't know how other intersections might compare.
So yeah, I also looked at just a couple of other similar four-way stop intersections just to kind of get an idea, how much worse is this than other ones or is it not worse? It does seem to trend on the higher side in terms of a four-way stop for traffic crashes. I looked at Western and McKee. So I'm just going to give you the total number of crashes during that four and a half year period for all these different locations. Western and McKee had nine total crashes during that period of time. So just a few lower. Looked at, bear with me, I got to get a binder clip out of the way. Wilson and Redan had 12. So that was actually one higher, slightly higher volume roadway. Wilson and Van Nordwick had five. And then McKee and Van Nordwick had six. So I would say it's on the higher end. You know, I think the further discussion with regards to what we want to do to address safety at that intersection, there are a higher number of injury crashes there, which is generally indicative of a higher speed crash, somebody disregarding a stop sign resulting in injury. I don't want to take, you know, too much away from the data that I'm looking at here, but certainly we'll continue to look at some other intersections, try to provide a really comprehensive comparison for council. And then ultimately, we may want to, you know, consult with a traffic consultant or somebody to establish some sort of criteria for if we were going to implement, say, a stop beacon or a flashing stop sign, does it meet those warrants or that threshold in order to install that? So that's kind of my thoughts on it at this point in time. But I think it definitely warrants further discussion.
And we have also had streets go out. I don't know the results. So just to make sure that there's no tree and brush covering the stop sign. Because as you guys mentioned, that, that is a detour route and if people are unaware of the area, they may be hidden. So that is being taken care of as well.
Okay.
I guess the last thing I'll say is there have been a number of improvements made at that intersection over the years. Just to give you guys some information, our streets department over the years, and I don't know the dates that these different things occurred, but they increased the size of the stop signs from the standard 30 inch to 36 inches. They put in larger stop bars. They put in crosswalk striping, put a reflective collar on the stop sign posts to increase visibility to the stopping action. They, we put in advanced warning signs for stop ahead, which were installed at 250 feet, which is further than is required for a 30 mile an hour roadway. They removed two-way and four-way placards and replaced it with all-way. They added the bike lane striping, which has the narrowing effect of the roadway to make it a narrower roadway to help reduce speeds and improve traffic calming. They added an additional speed limit sign for southbound. We added, the police department added a permanent radar speed sign for southbound traffic on Western Avenue near Thorson. And there has been periodic tree trimming to improve visibility. So this intersection's been on our radar for some time. We've had a number of complaints about it over the years and we have taken progressive steps to try to improve safety.
And chief, the police department has also, I think, within the last six months, done some enhanced enforcement in that area too. I see cars parked over there frequently.
Correct. And we are doing a dedicated traffic watch out there currently.
I was going to say too, for these sort of intersections, I know some places have started doing what are called crash analyses, where after a crash of different varying severity, they'll go out and kind of somewhat forensically determine like how the crash happened. I know I know the police, you know, record a lot of the information, but this is kind of a more focused effort towards that, because there's a lot of data you guys have to collect, I know, and it can be difficult to get all of that as a part of the job, just as, you know, a single or a couple folks going out there, officers checking it. So a lot of cities after the fact kind of review that data, this is something the surveillance system we're putting in might also be helpful for in certain spots, and try to determine what other causes in this scenario, in the environment are leading to these crashes, especially in the engineering side. So being able to add that could go a long way, too, towards improving things, because it sounds like we've tried a lot of stuff, and I'm sure it's helped a bit, but, you know, having some way to analyze the effectiveness of that goes a long ways, too, I think.
Kevin?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, chief, that was really helpful, and I think that putting in the context of the other intersections really sort of does, it actually makes me a little more worried about that intersection than I think I was before, in particular, since we're already, we're halfway through the year, we're almost at the highest total yet, right? We're at three for this year, and the highest of an entire year was four. You know, 2022, we had four crashes for the whole year, here we are, halfway through the year, we're already at three. So it does seem like there's something going on. Now, I'd love to see something happen, even if it's temporary, short term, just until maybe that Van Nordwick pass-through is, is completed. It'd be really nice to just see something that we can do to slow, slow folks down and have some interaction. And then last thing, and I'll, and I'll stop talking on this, is it does sound like we're in agreement that we want a larger, more in-depth discussion on what long-term solutions might look like, and I might suggest we just expand that out, you know, the list of, of high-impact intersections in general, right? Where are a couple of the key hotspots, and let's sort of talk about what's realistic, what's reasonable, maybe nothing, I don't know.
Roundabouts.
I, don't, don't joke with me, I love me a roundabout.
When we talk about this stuff, though, it'd be great to get a sense of, hey, what's the cost for these, for these systems, right? Like a flashing stop sign, is that 100 bucks, is that 1,000 bucks, is that $10,000, right? That comes into play, too. And my last and final point, fresh out of the rest of the evening, four, four accidents is a lot at an intersection. I've lived, I've lived in these areas, I mean, it's, it's a lot. So I wouldn't want to minimize that, because I know anyone watching this who is going through stuff like that, I'm with you, I know that's a lot, so.
I know, I've worked for 42, almost 42 years in front of Houston and 31, so I've seen a lot of accidents, a lot of really freaky accidents, and I don't want to jinx it, but after we did the road diet, it has changed the dynamic of how that intersection gets used. I've watched more people walk across that street with a bike than I think I've ever seen, and, you know, it's not even halfway into summer, and seen people respect that, and, and watch the traffic, because it's one at a time going through that portion right where it changes. It's, I think it's been a huge, you know, asset to not seeing accidents there.
Okay, does anybody else have any others? If not, motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Motion by Mulan, second by Malone? All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right. 9:15. Good night, Chris.
All right, everybody have a good Fourth of July, be safe.
I don't want to joke about it, but there's a lot of people that live in town, and they would wait.
Thank you.